Check us out to hear the latest on life in the volunteer state. Ivanka and her guests discuss everything from life, love and business with a Tennessee flair.
It's a Tennessee thing.
Always relatable, always relevant and always a good time. This is Talking Tennessee and now your host, Ivanka.
This episode is brought to you by Turning Knox Rental, your go-to for event rental services. We have selfie machines, 360 photo machines and food servicing machines that you can rent out to give your parties the best experience possible. Get the TKR experience with Turning Knox Rental. You can find us at www dot turningknoxrental dot com.
Welcome back to Talking Tennessee with Ivanka. I am your host and I am here with Knox County Commissioner John Schoolmaker for part two of the episode about Knox County, what is in the future? Welcome back.
Thanks, glad to be here again.
Let's get back into our discussion. So my first question is going to be, what is the biggest challenge that you see in Knox County today? And do you have a solution for it?
Well, since we're talking Tennessee.
Yes.
Everybody wants to come here and of course, everybody wants to come to Knox County because what are we known for? Like we talked in the past episode was the trees, the people, the community spirit. Everybody wants to come here. The problem is, we don't have vacant homes for everybody to move into.
I agree.
And it's, it's, you know, like town of Farragut is basically 90% built out. So Harden Valley is getting built out. Isn't that amazing?
Ninety percent, wow.
Yeah.
Keep going.
Harden Valley is getting pretty well built out. So the only place you can go is either South Knox County or East Knox County.
Correct.
The problem is, you just don't have the infrastructure there. You know, we don't have the sewer and you can't build subdivisions without sewer. And, um, and so that's, that's where it's frustrating because all these people want to come here, but where are we going to put them?
Right.
And a lot of people have seen a big increase in the number of apartments going up.
Yes.
And they're, they're going up everywhere and, um, and, and sometimes it, it seems like they're not really situated in the best location. Like was there any planning involved? Why was it selected? And, and it seems like if there's a, you know, 10, 15, 20 acre track, all of a sudden boom, there's apartments on it. And of course, we do need apartments.
We do, but I will say, John, a lot of people are concerned about that. A lot of people are concerned about so many apartments coming in. And to the viewers, let me say this, I see both sides of it. I do. I'm in real estate, John's Commissioner of Knox County. He sees both sides of it, but we have to have something for people. We have to have a place for people to live. People are not stopping for moving to Knox County in Tennessee. So you have to look at, you know, yes, you may not want to see an apartment building around by your house because that's not something you're used to. So I see that side, but then you've got so many people that cannot find housing that has to have somewhere to live. So it has to be an apartment because they can have more families in versus a single family house. Do you agree?
I agree, yes. And it's, it's also frustrating for citizens who've been here that 20, 25, 30 years.
Yes.
Where they've enjoyed this nice area that they moved to with the trees and, and parks and, and then all of a sudden, because there was a, a small farm that's now been sold.
Yes.
And all of a sudden, there's apartments that go up. And then they're saying, well, wait a minute, logically that makes no sense. Why would you put apartments there? Why wouldn't you put them over there? Because you're closer to services, you know? And it does change the, the landscape when everybody has a one or two story home and then you've got a four story apartment building next door. It, it just changes the way.
The whole dynamics.
The dynamics of it, exactly, exactly. And so a lot of people are frustrated with Knox County because they changed the dynamics of where their neighborhoods were.
Right.
And it's all to, to allow people from, as they say, out of state to come in and have what we have.
Right.
So are they ruining what we have by, by going in this direction?
But what I try to explain to my clients that, that are from east Tennessee, let's say this. I know when I moved to Knoxville, Turkey Creek was farmland. It was not Turkey Creek. And so this is how I try to explain it is I know how we all enjoy Turkey Creek. We go down there, we get to go eat dinner with our families. We get to go shopping with our families. We pick up our pharmacy. There's so many different parts of Turkey Creek. So I'm like, okay, I understand that you don't want apartments. You may not even want houses because there are some people that says, you know, I don't want always houses around me. I don't want to throw a rock and hit my neighbor's window. But you have to keep in mind, when you say you don't want anything to grow and be built up. You have to think about theirs, the Turkey Creeks. There's the different areas in Knox County that was not here 15, 20, 25 years ago. But now it's a walk of life. It's something that we enjoy with our families and our friends. So everything is not, as I say, the bad thing. Because I enjoy going to Turkey Creek. I enjoy, you know, going to different, you know, the grocery stores down there, you know, Walmart, former pharmacy. So you have to look at, you can't pick and choose what is built because we wouldn't have some of these things that have grown, we've grown accustomed to if those things wasn't, uh, built up. Do you agree with that?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
You know, because Turkey Creek is one of the biggest staples of my time as an adult that I know that that was farmland, every bit of that was farmland. You know, and just imagine, John, if they didn't build anything there.
Oh, I know.
You know, and so on the apartment part, um, can you please give us, enlighten us on what's the process with this, with all the apartments going up and what to expect?
Well, I think we're going to, in the future, see more apartments. Uh, I think when you look at the financial side of why the apartments are going up, a lot of these are being funded by these hedge funds out of Chicago and New York. Uh, it, they're get, some are getting tax abatements, uh, to put up apartments. So it's mainly a financial.
Sad part.
Pardon?
I said, that's the sad part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not the local firm that's putting up the apartments. So it's all about the money. And when you look at, you know, people off of Cedar Bluff who have a two bedroom apartment who were paying $800 a month and now that's gone to 1,200 or even $1,400 a month. That money, extra rent is not going to some firm locally. That's going to Chicago or New York or, or San Francisco.
And I think that's one of the hardest things, John, to accept is on that end, you know, like I said, I, I see both sides of it because we do have to grow, you know? But on the other end is so many families that work hard. You know, because sometimes people will sit and say, well, you know, you just gotta work harder. But how, how much harder do you have to work? If you get up and go to work every day, you work your 40 hour shift or more nowadays. Both, both parents are working and doing everything they can do to feed the family. And then your rent that is $800, and I do understand that, you know, houses that you're renting, that's someone's investment and they have the right to raise the rent. But it's, it seems like it's got so bad that the rents are so high that people are just truly, truly struggling. Struggling to make it in Knoxville's hot market.
Yeah.
You know?
And we've had a lot of people move out of Knox County to, to, uh, you know, Lenore City, City or Loudoun County.
Yes.
And, um, you know, I ran into a neighbor the other day and he goes, man, I hadn't been to Dixie Lee Junction in a while. And he goes, oh my goodness, look at all the apartments on the south side.
That's true.
All the way up the hillside, they were just stunned. And I said, well, if you go Watt Road to the other end by the interstate, that's pretty soon going to look like the same thing because there's new development going up in there as well. So.
So what do you, what do you say to the people that they're so against, against, but there's no way to stop?
You mean, we, you can't just put a moratorium and say, hey, we're not going to build apartments in Knox County.
Correct.
That's, that's, that's not going to work. You know, I would like to see them place them more logically to where there's services that are, uh, you know, right there. You wouldn't even have to have a car, you know? Everything is just, just right there. Um, but again, people are coming, we got to find a place to, to put them. Um, it's interesting, we have roughly about, I think the last number I saw, there was about 4,000 building permits in Knox County for home sites.
4,000, okay.
But they're not the, they're not starting construction on those yet. So some of them are, are buying property for future use, two or three years down the road where a developer then will have inventory to, to build on at that point. But it's like, we almost need some of those existing properties to go ahead and, and be under construction.
I'd like to touch on one thing about building, if you don't mind, is so many people will comment in about buying a lot. And they'll be like, well, I saw this lot and I'm thinking about buying it and I'm going to build when the market goes down. First, let me say this, and this is a personal opinion. John may not agree with this, okay? As a realtor, I, I would tell anybody, I will always say owning is much better than renting. I will always say that because one is invested in yourself, the other one is investing in someone else's investment. Uh, but I will say that, um, people need to understand when it comes to building. He touched on it in the first, uh, episode about the setbacks. You can't go out and see a lot, you're riding down the street. And, and please correct me on this, John.
Your correct.
You can't ride down the street and you see a lot, oh, and, and you look it up and you call a realtor and you say, oh, and I'm just throwing this out, there's probably not a lot out there for this amount, but I'm just throwing it out. Um, well, I just saw this lot for $5,000. And I want to go out here and I want to put, I want to build a house and whatever. First of all, there's procedures. There is permits you have to have. There is require, uh, setback requirements you have to have, uh, that John's office is going to make sure you have.
Yeah.
And so I want people to understand, and if you can touch on it for me, is that it's not about just finding any lot. And, you know, even down to mobile homes, there's people that calls me and they'll say, well, I just can't afford to be paying this rent. I'm going to go buy me a mobile home, I'm going to throw it on this lot. Well, you can't just throw a mobile home on a lot because there's restrictions. You know, covenants, there are different things. You can't go in a subdivision where there's all houses and throw a mobile home on a lot. Am I wrong?
You are correct, yeah. And of course, also on a vacant lot, you don't know, is that serviced by sewer? Or do you have to install a septic tank?
Yes. And those two things cost thousands of dollars, you know? And if you don't do your due diligence and you don't call the county and find out what the restrictions are, find out what they will allow to be built on that lot. You could be costing yourself thousands and thousands of dollars and have a lot that you can't do nothing with. You know, and there's a difference, there's a lot of people don't understand that residential and commercial is so much different. Can you touch on that part? You know, what the process pertaining to that?
The, the zoning, you have to find out exactly what that, that property is zoned for. And it, you know, if it's zoned for, uh, a house that only can cover 10,000 square feet of the buildable space or whatever, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of rules and regulations. But if you go down to the Knox Planning Office in the City County Building, you can give them the street address, you can look at all the documents and they can walk you through the process to say, um, no, you can't do that. You can't put that modular home on that, on that lot.
And you need to understand that you can go down, this is free information. They will tell you exactly what can be built on that lot. They will tell you all the restrictions, um, for that piece of property. And that can help you to save your money and then, and having a piece of property that you can do something with versus not being able to do something with.
Yeah.
So.
And, and the other thing too is, if you find vacant land, why isn't there something already on it? That's the big key.
It is.
If you look at a tiered system with tier one being the top, the best level lot, you know, then tier two, tier three. All the tier one, all the tier two properties are gone. That's why you see Farraguts build out so much. Tier three is out there, but what's wrong with it? You know, is it, was there a sinkhole underneath it? Or was that the, you know, you know, refuge pile where they, they just dug it up and put all kinds of stuff and then put tops of the lot? I mean, what, what, why is there not a house there now?
Cause it is truly not, if you really think about it, with our market thriving the way it has, uh, been thriving this, uh, this long, there's not a lot of vacant land.
Unless you go east or south.
East or south. I agree with that. And so you have to understand that, you know, if you want to build and even in building, let me say this, there is so many moving parts to building. You may have the perfect lot already, okay? And it may be, you know, the setbacks and everything line up, you know? Uh, but hear me when I tell you, you need to know what you're doing when you go in to building a home. Cause people think of the pretty parts, John. They do. They think about, they think about the pretty parts and they think of the finishing of the home. The finishings of it, what it's going to look like when it's finished. But there are so many things that you need to think about before you ever lay that foundation, before you ever do anything. And so I think that the first thing you need to do is get educated. Educated on, you know, what you need to know. Go to the commissioner's office, find out what you need to know. Go to, a lot of people don't even know, they see county building, they, they don't go there. You know, you need to go where the material is there and the documents that you need to build.
Well, and even too, to find out who actually owns the land.
Yes.
Cause you could be buying it from somebody who doesn't own the land.
Truly, truly, truly. And let me say this, there are so many people and, and here, let me give this insight of what he's talking about. Uh, we've had several calls through this summer of people, uh, and I'm warning you about scams out there. People will call and say, I want to list a piece of property. Here's my, the address to the property. Here's my name. I, I'm, I'm from out of state and can you just send me the paperwork? First of all, we don't do that at the Landis team. First of all, we verify everything about you because we want to know, this is a, a, a solid deal, a, a legitimate deal. And so I had a gentleman that called me and said he had a piece of property off of Keller Benham. Okay? But he was a scammer, John. Let me tell you what he did. He literally went, and you know, in the tax records, you know how your name is the opposite? Your last name is first.
Yes.
And your, and your first.
Yeah.
The guy was that crazy. He sends me, he copies the name from y'all's tax records and says, this is my name. And so let's just say the guy's name was Greg Dobson. So it said Dobson Greg. He literally texts me that way, my name is Dobson Greg. And I got a piece of property out of Keller Benham and I want to sell it. And so liter, and he literally wanted to argue with me, John, on the phone about, well, why don't you understand? You can just send the paperwork to me. And I, and I, what I told him is, if you're out of state, you have to go to a notary. My paperwork I can send to you because we do out of state.
Yeah, sure.
But you have to go in front of a notary. You have to show ID, you have to prove who you are. And this man was livid, John.
Yeah.
Because I wanted him to go in front of a notary. I've got to protect myself. So I'm telling all the viewers, please be careful on knowing you need to know what John said. That is some valuable information. You need to know who you're buying from, you know? And if you are not a person, even if you're a person that's bought before, the market that we're in now and the market that your mom and dad bought in is two different markets. And you can't compare notes because the notes will never line up because this is a totally different market. Do you agree?
I agree, I agree.
So tell me this for the commission, what, what is for 2023? The year's about over. What would you like for, to end with? And what would you like to begin in 2024 in, as a commissioner? And that may be a hard question.
Like a project or a project?
A project that you, is there a project that you would hope that it will be finished?
Well, I'm hoping something will get, at least get, will move some earth. And that is for Canton Hollow Road in West Knox County. I've been working on that since, uh, probably the early 2016s. And, um, uh, we're at the point now to let the bid out to get that started. So that's.
So 2024, you're thinking?
That they'll, they'll really start going on. And it's just been a unbelievably long process to get there, but it's one of the worst, uh, roads in Knox County based on traffic accidents.
Kent Hollow is a hard one.
Which is kind of, is a segue to something else. It's just, everybody's complaining about the traffic in Knox County.
Yes.
But th- there's no quick fix. It takes at least eight years to even get something identified through the planning processes, through the permitting process, through the, uh, right away acquisition before you can even start work. And, and you'd look at subdivisions that have gone in off of French Road or wherever. And you're like, well, why can't they just widen the road? Well, they didn't know those subdivisions were going to be there until a year ago. You know, we would have had to start seven years prior to that and nobody has that.
That makes sense.
With everybody coming in and all of this building and going on, you can never, you know, catch up with the infrastructure.
And people are, people are coming in faster than y'all can get things done.
Absolutely. It's the Shaw Road, they had to build that in four different sections. It's been 25 years since it was originally decided to do that, 25 years ago.
Really?
And they're still working on Shaw Road, which will be a great east west thoroughfare, but it takes time.
It takes time.
It takes time and people don't, you know, it's just incredible.
They don't want to wait, they don't want to wait.
And, and we've got.
And you want to get it done because you have to understand that as a consumer, you don't want to wait. But at the same time, they don't want to wait either because they don't want to deal with the complaints. They don't want to deal with, you know, if they could get it done and not have to deal with a complaint, of course, you're going to want to get it done. So the, the calls, the emails, all the different things that you have to deal with. Um, so you have to understand that we're on the same team. It may not feel like we're on the same team, but we are on the same team. It's about resolving things and getting a solution.
Yes.
And to grow. Knox County has to grow. And I need y'all to understand that Knox County is going to grow. It's going to be some truly, those growing pains, you know, with kids, your parents said growing pains. You know, you're going to feel the growing pains. We're feeling them right now. We're feeling them right now. So let me ask you a question. If you're a resident, I mean, if you're a resident, uh, of Knox County and you have a concern or you have whatever, and you want to voice your concern, how do you do that?
Well, if you feel like you, and it depends on what kind of department it is, if it's something with parks or whatever. If you reach out to that agency and you don't feel like you, you've got the answer that you want. And then send, uh, your commissioner an email, uh, and spell out, tell us exactly what the situation is. And, uh, give us an opportunity to see what needs to be done. Cause numerous times I've had people, uh, who've been great about sending the email and including photos. That's priceless because I can take those photos if it's a drainage issue or where a curb, uh, in a residential street has deteriorated. Now the water's going all on the front yard of the, the homeowner who lives on the corner. When I send those photos over to our engineering people, they're like, oh, this is a no brainer. We can get out there in three days and get that finished.
And that's easy proof, being able to prove what is going, truly going on.
We don't even need to send an inspection team, which takes extra time. It's just like, oh, boom, black and white, here it is. This is the issue, boom, we can get it done. And it speeds up the process. It's amazing. It's just really amazing.
So next question. What is the big, if someone wants to get involved in local government and make a difference, of your opinion, where would they start? And let me tell you the reason I'm asking you.
Okay.
Because at the beginning, you told me that you came from Tampa.
Yeah.
You had no clue that you were going to be a commissioner.
No way.
You had no clue you was going to sit on all these boards. You had no clue that you would make the kind of decisions that you make today. Let me be, say this publicly, I thank you for the service that you've done for Knox County. You have done a commend, a commendable job that is very, very impressive to me. Uh, like I said, I've always admired you from afar. Um, now we sit on HOA together and we have a good old time in our subdivision. But I didn't know you then, you know what I'm saying? Until I came on HOA and I've got to know you. And let me be a Knoxville resident that says, thank you for all that you do. And for every complaint, for every day that it feels like you're not getting nothing done. Let me be someone to say, I thank you for everything you've done. Tell me how to tell people how to come behind a John and, and make a difference. Maybe not be a commissioner, maybe not be on that scale, but just make a difference.
Yeah. I think it's just a matter of, you know, kind of getting out of your, your shell, if you want to say, and just get involved. You know, we, there's a lot of, uh, different, uh, boards that, uh, citizens from Knox County can serve on. From the Merit Council to the Board of Zoning Appeals, to Metropolitan Planning Commission and, and the Library Board. And so whatever your passion is, go look and see, because board members are term limited or they can only serve maybe two years, three years, and then they have to roll off. And that, that's a good, so you get always new insights. But find out what is your passion and then say, hey, you know, I really like the library. I think this is something we, you know, go to see when the next vacancy is for the Library Board.
Yeah.
You know, um, there's also a Parks and Recreation Board. If you're an enthusiast about mountain biking or, uh, walking or hiking trails and greenways, see about when the next opening up is for the parks.
You know?
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be in a public, you know, a big role in the public figure because there's a lot of moving parts to it. He'll tell you that and I'm telling you, being in the public eye is not the easiest. It's truly not. And it's not called for everybody to do, but you can make a difference in Knox County by getting involved. Another one is, I just told you, me and John, I've admired him from afar, but we didn't form a, a relationship till we got our HOA. If there's a HOA in your subdivision, get involved.
Absolutely.
I'm over the social committee in my subdivision and I have such a great time just creating. Creating events, me and my family and everybody on the board. We get, we get together, we, you know, give opinions and, and suggestions how we can make our subdivision better and how we can bring all the families together, you know, to love on each other. So that's another way. It doesn't have to be, you know, you're on TV or radio or whatever, that type thing. But HOA is a good start. At least you get to understand how decisions are made because I hear so many people complain about their HOA.
But they've never served on the board.
But you've never served on the board. How are you going to make a difference? Uh, you know, there's people say, I don't want to pay HOA fees. Hear me when I tell you I pay my HOA fees and hear me why I pay my HOA fees. Because I want my subdivision to look its best and it does require money, you know, that type thing. And if you're going to move in a subdivision and that has a HOA, participate. And if you're gonna move in a subdivision and it has a HOA, participate. Participate. It, don't complain about the front of your subdivision looking haggard or whatever you call it. If you're not participating, and even if you're paying your dues or whatever and you see weeds, that's another way to participate. Go help the HOA make, you know, get on the beautification um committee in your HOA. That's how you can make a difference. John, tell me this. If you could take your finger and push a button in Knox County. Y'all knew I was gonna get it on this one. If you could take your finger and push a button and you say, I want this to change in my community, what would it be? He's gonna get me for this, y'all.
You talked about, yeah, that is one that I had anticipated that you would do, but I I knew there's got, there's always gotta be the zinger. Um.
Is there anything that you would say that you'd like to change about your community? And it may be something just, it don't have to be me.
I I guess. Wow. Um, probably. You have got me on that, you definitely got me on that one thinking, cause there's something like, I guess, to to change the community. I I mean, we do have great community, I think. And I think, I I I I tell you one thing I wish I could change, I've got it now.
Okay.
The misinformation that goes out, you know, the 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 Facebooks, the Nextdoor apps.
Yes.
All those where someone will make a statement.
Yes.
And they have, there's no background information, they have not done their homework. And it's off to the races, it's off to the races. You cannot imagine how many things that I've had to squelch because it was absolutely false. I mean, it was, I sometimes I'm I'm thinking, I couldn't have even made this up. Where did these people get this idea? But they sit it on their little computers and they go, and they just say nonsense. And it's hard, it's hard to stop it. It's just hard to stop it.
But you had to be careful with, and I'm glad you brought that one, because that was something we need to tackle. Is be careful on jumping on a bandwagon because everybody's talking about it. Don't be that person. Be the person that says, okay, this is what's being talked about. Let me go to the appropriate people and see what I can do to make it better. Don't join in to the chatter.
Yeah.
Don't be the kikier, is what I call it. You kiki and you give to this person, to that person. Be the one that says, you know what, if this is truly a problem, how can I bring a resolution to it? Don't be the one that makes it get bigger. And a lot of these apps, the stuff that goes on there, the stuff the neighbors uh will sit and say, ninety-five percent of that stuff has no merit.
Yeah.
It has not. But what gives it merit is when the people jump on the bandwagon and they and they and they get to calling and texting and and all this kinda stuff, and it just grows so big. And then, so then when the commissioner comes in or whoever has to come in and squash it, they look like they're just killing, killing the, you know, whatever. Yeah, but it's, but they have, you have to squash it.
Yeah. It it's and it's very frustrating, cause it's like putting out a wildfire with a bucket of water, you know, and it it's just. And instead of contacting you first to say, hey, I heard this, is this true? No, they, there's no verification.
There's no verification.
Off to the races. And that that, I guess the end would be, if I could push, that'd be it. Stop, Nextdoor and Facebook where people just go on and on and get everybody.
Worked up.
Oh, it's.
All worked up.
It's wild.
So my last question is, what's next for you? Just John and Heather. What's next?
Well, I uh, I'm actually a county commissioner until August thirty-first of next year, that's when my final term ends. Um, and one of the things, when I first got on commission, I made a promise to myself and to the community that I would never miss a county commission meeting, a work session meeting, a beer board meeting, a finance committee meeting, or an audit committee meeting, and I haven't in eight and a half years.
You have a good life.
So I've got, you know, we haven't traveled, you know, I've I've had commissioners that that have gone to Italy and things and missed meetings. But because of my background, I felt like if I missed a meeting, I was letting down fifty-five thousand people that weren't being representative.
Did y'all hear that?
So September first, we'll be traveling.
Did y'all hear that? He said he made a commitment to Knox County and the citizens of Knox County that he wouldn't miss a meeting, he hasn't missed one. He has a family, he has kids, and his family needs to see him. You know, his assignment will be up next August. So for this next year, let's give him the best year of his career that, you know, that we join together with him, not fighting, but join together and try our best to resolve some things, build some things, and when he steps out of that position, he goes back to his family, he goes back to Heather, and they start embark on a different part of life.
Journey.
Thank you, John.
Well, thank you. This has really been a lot of fun. I'm glad we got the second section.
Yes, most definitely. Cause I really wanted people to, uh, so many people wanted to know, you know, about the affordable housing. And people wanted to know about the apartments, and they wanted to buy different things, and I wanted to make sure that we covered everything, and I think we have.
You have.
We have covered everything, so tune in every Friday at four, Talk in Tennessee with Ivanka. Bye, guys.